All right, great. Thank you so much. This meeting of the West Orange Board of Education is called to order. I think I get to do this. I feel like Thor. I'm not sure I'm worthy. So, welcome everyone who's joined us tonight for the meeting. Unfortunately, President Tunoclyff is unable to attend tonight's meeting. And I want to thank her for taking time on Sunday to help prepare me for tonight. And we look forward to seeing you at the next one, Jen. Welcome to those viewing online. Please note that we do not monitor any chat comments posted on the live stream of this meeting. All right, Ms. Flowers, would you please do roll call and announce the notice of meeting?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Mrs. Huerta, here. Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Vice President Rothstein?
Here.
President Tuniclyff. Notice of meeting, please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7, 2022. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
All right, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, united, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, first item of business. Members of the Board of Education have had the opportunity to review the minutes of our past two meetings. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from our meetings on January 19 and 24?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rock and Ms. Huerta. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the vote.
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business, we're on to reports from our student liaisons. Want to say good evening to Baram and Rhoda. Thank you so much for joining us again. And before you begin, I also just wanted to say to Baram, congratulations on being the recipient of the West Orange Human Relations Commission's Martin Luther King Distinguished Service Award. It was terrific to see you in that program and see you receive that award.
Thank you. It truly does mean a lot. Again, thank you to the West Orange Relations Committee. It really truly does mean a lot to be recognized for the efforts that I've done, but also the efforts that a lot of the youth who have come before me have helped pave the way for. So this past week, the Black Student Union of West Orange High School came to speak over Google meets about various topics. Came to speak with Zelli Imani, a prominent activist within New Jersey grassroots sphere, to speak about various topics that interested our students. Topics ranged from the prison industrial complex to philosophy, to the philosophy of mutual aid. Mutual aid is a practice in which one evolves from the individual mentality of viewing others as rivals to helping one's neighbors, friends, and overall community in thriving and growing. Following this on Friday, students listened to the Black National Anthem over the loudspeakers. And students were very enthusiastic, which was very heartwarming to see. This month is Black History Month, is Black History Month, and we are celebrating at West Orange High School. Student Council has a month-long online event via Instagram at well, w-o-h-s-stu-co, S-T-U-C-O, highlighting people who have had a positive impact on the community, including staff, students, and community members. Also, BSU is sponsoring a BHM Spirit Week. In celebration of Spirit Week, BSU is asking its students, the Black Student Union, for those of you who don't know, is asking students to participate throughout the week. Today, students wore red, green, and black to represent the Pan-African flag. Tuesday, February 8th, students are asked to wear all black in remembrance of the victims of police brutality. Wednesday, February 9th, is Diaspora Day, where students wear elements of their nation's, their nation's flag or elements of their culture to represent our diversity. Thursday is Icon Day, in which students will wear articles of clothing with images of famous black icons from Malcolm X to MLK and from Biggie to Tupac. You know, a little posing. Friday is, and finally Friday is HBCU Day, where students will wear apparel supporting the various HBCUs across the United States, such as Morehouse and Spelman.
Good evening, everyone. Coming up this Saturday, February 12, from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM, is the Color Guard Invitational, in which various schools will come to West Orange High School to compete and showcase their skills. School against school, act against act, it's sure to be a spectacular performance. So please, if you can, you can come out and support our Color Guard team. The Jubilee Choir will be also holding their annual Jubilee Choir Concert February 17th at 7:00 PM. This will be the first concert since 2019. Our choir has been waiting to provide the community joy through songs, so let's all come together and support them this upcoming February 17th at 7:00 PM in the PVW Auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board, if there's any questions?
No, just congratulations again.
Thank you. All right. And I think that brings us on to item number eight. Superintendent and Board Reports. So, starting with you, Dr. Cascon, do you have a report for us this evening?
Thank you, Vice President Rothstein. Just a, just a brief report this evening, just wanted to highlight a few, a few things. One, I just want to thank our student liaisons for keeping us updated on the, the goings-on at the high school and acknowledgement of Black History Month. There are many activities occurring throughout the district and we'll be prepared at our, our second February meeting on the 28th to report out on, on some of those things and maybe even have a few surprises in store for the board and the, and the public on that evening. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge a National School Counseling Week this week publicly and publicly acknowledge and thank all of our student counselors and of course, our Director of Student Counseling Services, Ms. Cheryl Butler, for the tremendous and really just, just heartfelt work that they do on a, on a daily basis. Know that you are appreciated and the work that you do is valuable. And so kids, parents, you know, colleagues, you know, don't, don't hesitate to, to take maybe what you're thinking or feeling about one of those folks during this weekend to just, just tell them. Drop them an email. You know, just pop into their office and tell them they spend every day giving of themselves in support of others. Fill their well back up this week and drop them a note and, and let them know how much you appreciate what they've done for you over the, over the years or maybe just more recently. And in addition, we will shortly, this month in February, on the 22nd, we have, we've, we've, we've funded quite a number of programs through the SRR3 grant, or the American Rescue Plan Grant. And after a number of weeks and months of getting those prepared and getting our staffing in order, we are prepared on February 22nd to begin the after-school programs. And on February 26th, to begin the, the Saturday Academy programs. And very excited to be able to offer those opportunities to our students. And finally, this, this just out in the news today, I'm sure you've all heard that Governor Murphy has indicated that the, the mask, the mandatory mask, you know, mandate, if you will, will sunset on March 7th. This is new information, hot off the presses. And so, you know, we will continue to make decisions in this school district like we've always made decisions. Not knee-jerk, not, you know, fly-by-night, but rather let us receive this information. Let's process it. Let us have an opportunity to engage in inclusive conversation with all of our stakeholders to understand how our stakeholders are receiving this news. And last but not least, let's look to our local and state Departments of Health to understand if there are any corresponding guidelines that we need to be considering when making these decisions. I want to thank the governor for providing us with more than a month, or exactly a month, rather, to, to prepare and to do the research and have the conversations that are necessary in making a decision like this and such a critical matter and on which there are very different opinions. So certainly I can assure the board and the community that we'll be providing updates on an ongoing basis as to the status of those conversations and ultimately the position that the board and the district will be taking. So with that, that concludes my report, Vice President Rothstein. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much. All right, well, let's go to Board Reports then. So specifically with regards to any committee updates or any boardwork information that you'd like to share, like to begin with Mr. Rock, anything to report?
Yes, thank you. We have a initial meeting for the Town Council Liaison set up for next Tuesday, February 15th. So after that, we'll have another report at the next February meeting.
I'm sorry, did you say that was for the 24th?
15th, Tuesday, February 15th.
Got it, thank you.
Ms. Huerta and I are both Town Council Liaisons, so we'll collectively have a report at the next meeting.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Vice President Rothstein. There is no report with respect to negotiations at this time. There should be a forthcoming report at the February 28th meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta.
Just a couple of legislative updates. There was quite a bit going on. I'll just highlight a few that stood out to me as it pertains to our district. They did pass a new bill, BOE Student Representatives Representative. So this requires that at least one student representative be appointed to each Board of Education of a school district. And the reason that this one jumped out at me obviously is because we've been doing this for now the second year. And we have not just one, two, but four student representatives this year. The alternates, you know, included in that. And so just, it just makes us feel good that we're kind of ahead of the, you know, the rest of the, the state in that regard. There is another bill that was passed, Asian American Heritage. This bill establishes a commission on Asian, Asian heritage in the NJ DOE. The purpose of the commission will be to survey, design, and encourage and promote the implementation of historical, cultural, and educational programs concerning people of Asian and Asian-American descent in New Jersey. There is a new special education unit that would create a special education unit within the Office of Administrative Law and require an annual report. The Special Education Unit would consist of administrative law judges having expertise in special education law. The law will take effect nine months following the appointment and confirmation of 15 additional administrative law judges. But no later than two years following enactment. So that's going to be forthcoming. Okay. Another one that stood out to me was school bus safety. This bill creates the Office of School Bus Safety in the NJ DOE. The office will be charged with overseeing the school busing industry to, and to coordinate enforcement and accountability among the department, school bus drivers, and school bus contractors. So I thought that was really important, given all that's going on with our buses. And if you would like any more information, New Jersey School Board Association.org is where you can go to find more details. And that's all for me.
Great, thank you so much. Couple words on, from the Policy Committee. So very excited to announce that our new policies are now available on the Board of Education website at wboe.org in the Board of Education section. This is the culmination of more than two years of efforts to revamp all of our bylaws, policies, and regulations. Now, all of that, all of the information that governs our district from the, from the standpoint of policy is more easily searchable than it's ever been before. I just wanted to offer some thanks to our predecessors on the board, to Terry Trigg Scales, who really spearheaded and drove this project forward, to Cheryl Merklinger, who spent an incredible amount of hours and effort reviewing the details of the policies and really making sure that we were buttoned up and respecting what came before. Ken Alper, who also is a driving force behind the updates. And also wanted to thank Jen Tunoclyff and Melinda Huerta, who also, along with me, as relative newcomers, did a lot of special meetings on policy and a good deal of work moving that forward. Thank you, and also and also express gratitude to Sandra Mordecai, who was on the board before I joined as well for her efforts on, on policy for West Orange and looking out for the best interests of our students through policy. Finally, also to Dr. Cascon and Mrs. Hughes for your guidance and support on all of the details and the efforts to make this happen. So it's huge. I think we all should pat ourselves on the back. And this is good for the district. And then we roll up our sleeves and get started on any, any updates. Speaking of which, I've scheduled some time with Mr. Stevenson, who's on the Policy Committee with me and Dr. Cascon. And we will meet next week to look at, align our next steps and processes for keeping our policies updated as required moving through this year. Finally, on one last note, I wanted to give a brief update on the search for an interim superintendent. I wanted to share with the public that the process is moving along. And we plan to introduce and approve an interim superintendent at the meeting on February 28th. We're confident that the candidate will be an outstanding caretaker of our district as we move forward in our search for a full-time permanent superintendent. And with that, if my computer will stop fighting me. With that, I think we are moving into the Personnel Section. And my computer is still fighting me. Apologies, one moment. Nope. I think I'm wrestling control here. There we go. Thank you, though. So let's consider items in Section 10A. You know what? I apologize. I think, I think I jumped the gun. Did anybody have any questions for Dr. Cascon from his report? Okay. And I think let's move into Section 10A Personnel. We'll look at items one through six, which includes resignations and retirements, rescissions, and appointments. This includes assignments at West Orange High School for many coaches and for musicians for the Spring Musical. Also, an assignment for a drama set design and construction at Liberty Middle School. Leaves of absence and an affiliation agreement with the University of Scranton for student teaching. Finally, a sidebar agreement for the West Orange Education Association for an employee to receive compensation for additional workload. So this covers those items, attachments two, three, and four. And I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Personnel Section 10A, one through six.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Rock. I'd like also, before we, before I ask for any discussion, I wanted to note with some sadness, this will keep coming up, I think, over the upcoming, upcoming weeks. Dr. Cascon's resignation is officially documented here in this agenda. I know there will be other opportunities to say farewell, but wanted to take this moment to say, I know we're all wishing you well as you prepare for the next step in your adventure in education. And we appreciate your service in the upcoming weeks to keep our schools running well and to transition the district to new leadership. And I also wanted to acknowledge the retirement of Sherry Ritter after 21 years. Thank you so much for your service to our schools and our students, and we wish you the best. All right, so any, any discussion on these items?
I also just wanted to thank the volunteers. I did notice that there are volunteers on this for golf. And so I think that, you know, volunteering to do any type of work, you know, that takes, that takes your time. It's very much appreciated in our district. So thank you very much. And I do have their names on here. I'll just read them out if that's okay. Craig Champagne, Christopher Evans, and Sean Shaw. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And any other questions or, or commentary?
No, I'm done.
All right, seeing none. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the vote?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next section, Curriculum and Instruction. This is Section 10B. You know what? Did I skip? I skipped questions from the public on agenda items.
There were no submissions through the Google Doc. It went live over the weekend. There were no submissions and we don't have any audience. So that's why I didn't stop you. You're doing well.
Okay. You know, it's, it's first-time jitters, apologies. But, but thank you. All right, so let me jump back then to there we go. So Curriculum and Instruction, items one through four. This includes applications for school business requests, approval for a, a field trip for the Future Business Leaders of America to a conference in Atlantic City, approval for TESSO Consulting Group to provide professional development on culturally responsive strategies. So it's those items, attachments four and five. And can I have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rock and Mrs. Huerta. Any discussion? None. I have just a couple of questions. First of all, Dr. Cascon, maybe you could give us a little additional information on the field trip for the Future Business Leaders of America? Was just curious about approximately how many students are participating in this?
It's eight students that are participating as part of the, the annual State FBLA competition. And these students would have qualified for that competition through more regional and local level competitions. And so it's, 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 it's an honor of some sorts, you know, to have been, to have earned a place in the state level competition and certainly wish them all the best.
Absolutely. Yeah, very, very great to see that participation from West Orange. And also I had a question, a follow-up question on the TESSO Consulting. So I noted that this is for the Basic Skills Group. And yeah, I was wondering if you're sure. Oh, sure, sure. I think you know where I'm going with this. I was just looking for a little bit more information about how that, how the, because it looks like a terrific opportunity. Just wanted to know a little bit more about how that might be shared out in, in professional development to the larger faculty.
Sure. So this, this was professional development that was offered to our BSI teachers. And it is in, in the realm of instructionally and culturally responsive strategies, which is really to say that, you know, particularly for basic skills teachers, and they're working with students who might be experiencing learning loss or perhaps performing below grade level is really, you know, understanding, you know, you know, all the factors which might be contributing to that and also, you know, gaining an understanding of that student individually and how to reach that student best. This is actually, this type of professional development has actually been ongoing for approximately the last two years. Not necessarily through this provider, but all of our social studies teachers, all of our ELA teachers, all of our media specialists have all undergone similar types of training. And really this, the, the impetus for this training really began in earnest, you know, two years ago when we, you know, we passed the, the Equity Bylaw and we really started taking a hard look at our practices. And so this is really a continuation of that, but this program is offered under the leadership of Dr. Tamika Pollins, who oversees that Basic Skills Department. And certainly, the great thing about basic skills teachers is they, and I'm, I'm going to wrap it up. I know, I know.
Take your time.
That's probably, that's one thing you're probably not going to miss. My long-winded answers. I apologize. But one of the great things about, about the basic skills teachers is the nature of those roles, not only pulling students out, but also pushing in to classrooms and also to some extent, serving in coaching and advisory capacities to the classroom teachers. One could argue that, that, that the methodology that they pick up through that becomes much more diffuse as a result of how they interact in the building. But that's just a, a little bit in a nutshell.
That's really helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Seeing no other discussion on, on these items, Mrs. Flowers, would you please take the vote?
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving along here. I think I'm going to set a record. A speed record here. All right, so Section 10C Finance. So this will cover off on Items A, Special Services, and B, Business Office. This includes tuition, extraordinary aid services and adjustments, vendors to complete specialized evaluations, agreements for the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia Program, approval of bills, acceptance of donations, voiding of checks, 60-month lease with Pitney Bowes, approval of Dr. Park to provide a psychiatric evaluation report, approval of a settlement agreement, and approval of a resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting procurement process to secure professional development services. First, I want to thank the Black Bod Giving Fund, the Francis Mend Scholarship Fund, and the Rotary Club of West Orange for your generous donations to the school district. And I ask, can I have a, a motion to approve these items under Finance?
A motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta and Mr. Rock. Any discussion?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. One of the donors, so there are three donors, the Black Bod Giving Fund, the Francis Mendy Scholarship Fund, and the Rotary Club of West Orange. The Francis Mendy Scholarship Fund, it goes to Washington Elementary School. And a little bit of the backstory about Mrs. Mendy or Francis Mendy. She was a music teacher at Washington Elementary School. And she was a handicap teacher. And she was my music teacher. And she instilled a lot of love of music for me as a kid. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get, not emotional, but she did pass away after I graduated, I believe, high school and possibly. But she was, you know, a wonderful lady. And it just gave me an opportunity to have a teacher that wasn't, I guess, like everyone else, right? You know, at first, I think it was intimidating when I first saw her. But it just gave me a lot of compassion for people that, you know, have different circumstances and still come out and do what they need to do and help instill the love of music and other things and, and people. So thank you very much for that donation. So thank you very much for that donation.
What a beautiful tribute. And thank you. So I think that's probably my favorite moment at a board meeting in a long time. That was really nice. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the vote?
Mrs. Huerta? Yes. Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, you know, again, jitters just ran right through. Is it okay for me to ask for just a little bit of feedback on one item, even though we just closed that out? Dr. Cascone, I did have one question on Item Number 3, which is the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia. It's a really interesting program and a great opportunity. A price tag associated with it as well. So I just had wanted to ask for a little more of an explanation for everyone listening.
Sure. And if what I'm going to do is I did solicit some some feedback from Mrs. Goary Fitzgerald, and so I'm just going to go and just sort of read what she's, what she had provided. I could paraphrase, but I think it's best for the board and the community to hear it directly. So the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia or ACE ABA instructional program provides effective and appropriate assessments, instructional programs, and resources to meet the individualized needs of students with autism. The Supervisor of Special Services facilitated teachers of students with autism to pilot various instructional programs during the 2019-20 school year. The teachers were given the opportunity to pilot and utilize various programs, which included ACAB, Rethink, Lifted, and provide input. Based upon the feedback from teachers, it was decided to move forward with the ACAB instructional program. This program is used within the district autism program across 12 classes from pre-K to grade 12, targeting approximately 75 students with increasing enrollment. This is a yearly cost. Oops. This is a yearly cost for teachers to access this online program for each student in their class as outlined in the board notes.
I'm not the only one fighting my computer this evening, I see.
Yes. It's actually, it's yearly cost for teachers to access this online program for each student in their class as outlined in the board notes. The ACA AB software system contains assessments, lesson plans, data collection and graphing tools to supplement district curriculum and maximize the progress of students in the program. The lesson plan still give me a hard time. This is where we just have to feel comfortable in silence for just a moment. The design allows for students to require various forms of teaching, DTI, task analysis, incidental naturalistic skills assessments modules also allow. And it also includes, Mr. Rothstein, a number of training programs that PD is built into that quote. So it's not only for the curricular material itself and the platform with its assessments and tools, but also for several professional development workshops a year.
Outstanding.
Thanks for that question.
Sure. Thank you so much for the explanation. And all right. So I think that that brings us to Section 11, Petitions and Hearings from the Citizens. If oh, and there's right, I'm skipping Item D. Thank you very much. All right. So we are at Item D miscellaneous. Can I have a motion to approve Section D miscellaneous?
So moved.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Was that Mr. Stevenson? Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Huerta. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Mrs. Flowers, would you please take the vote?
Mrs. Huerta? Yes. Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
And if I may, just to call your attention to the addendum, I don't believe under the Personnel Items, the addendum, did you include that, Mr. Rothstein, I don't believe, 3A? Appointments?
I don't have that on on this agenda.
It was in an addendum. I think we're gonna need to do a separate motion for Personnel Addendum.
Can I move the approval of A3E, the addendum?
Yes. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, with apologies, I don't have this, so.
It was uploaded.
Thank you so much.
Can I just? Mr. Rock, or do you have the digital version of the addendum?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Okay.
I received it as well.
As well. Okay. I just wanted to make sure if anyone else needed hard copies, we could furnish those. So I don't know if the board wanted to take a moment to just review the attachment. Just for the board's clarification, this is just approval of substitute teachers to to serve in the aforementioned Saturday and after-school ESR programs. I apologize, Mr. President, Vice President Rothstein, we should have called greater attention to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we've so we've had a motion to approve that, and it's been seconded. Are we good to then move to a vote?
If I may just make sure I have, was it Mr. Rock first and Mr. Stevenson second?
Yes.
Thank you. And for a vote?
Any discussion on this item? Nope. So yes, vote please.
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
Thank you. And apologies again for that oversight.
Nope. Thank you for, thanks for calling it to my attention. All right. Now we're at Public Comment, Petitions and Hearings of Citizens. If you'd like to make a comment, please come forward to the microphone, and you'll have up to three minutes to make your statement.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Elmani Vani, 186 Forest Hill Road. Hope everyone's safe. So I'm pretty sure we all got the news about the way the state wants to move in regards to being maskless in our schools. As an educator, as an administrator, I'm 24-year veteran educator. I am imploring that we here in West Orange maintain the mask mandate through the rest of the year. Several reasons why. Number one, we do not know the impact on overworked nurses regarding contact tracing. For example, in my district that I'm at, I had a student test positive for COVID. That student was sitting with six other students. There was no spread why everybody was wearing masks. Now, if you go maskless, those nurses have to now do contact tracing on those six students that were sitting at that desk. Not including now the number of students that will be maskless have to sit in a classroom. Now you have to contract trace all of those, figure out who's vaccinated, who has boosters, so forth and so on. Also including a lunchroom. That's including every other thing that the nurse has to deal with. We seen during the Omicron variant and at the time of the surge, how overworked and strained nurses were being called every single day, at least I saw in West Orange High School, pretty much is the twin of the high school in which I'm at. The other thing to keep in consideration is the trauma upon teachers. We're gonna go from a year and a half to where teachers comfortably and safely seeing students all wearing masks to now putting teachers in front of 20, 26 number of students per class no longer wearing masks with everyone breathing right in front of them. Have we thought about that? As well as the older teachers, also teachers that are immunocompromised. What about students that are immunocompromised? We should not underestimate the impact of trauma about children also coming to school have seen kids without masks, and that could be. The other thing, and I'll sort of kind of close on this. We've been here before. We were here in July when we dropped the mask mandate, and the Delta variant came. And we saw a surge. We've been here before when we see numbers go down, and then all of a sudden variants come out of nowhere. Let's remember the Omicron variant hit us during Thanksgiving, and within three weeks had caused an amazing surge. How do we know that come March, we drop this mask mandate and another variant comes? That's far more transmissible. We don't know. We've been there before. So I say this, we only have four months left. When we talk about normalcy, let's at least get through the normalcy with masks, making sure we see and understand how these variants are gonna go and close out the year. And then we can start anew, start fresh at the beginning of school year. I think that's good for everybody, all parents, teachers, educators, staff, and administrators involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vani.
Thank you, Mr. Vani. Always good to see you. I would just reiterate my remarks, which I made as part of my superintendence update, is that obviously, you know, this is new news today, and we're going to process it and discuss it inclusively and make our decisions not in a knee-jerk, fly-by, fly-by-night fashion. And just that we're thankful that we have some time, you know, that this was not another mandate guideline change, rather, that happened, came out today, and we were expected to do it tomorrow. So we have a fair amount of runway to consider feedback like yours, which was provided tonight. You raise a fair point about the contact tracing. That is one thing about the masks is it does preclude us from contact tracing those students. So I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Flowers, were there any questions submitted via the Google form?
No, Vice President Rothstein, there were not.
All right. I think that concludes the petitions and hearings of citizens. And we will move on to reports from from board members. So let me start with with Mr. Stevenson.
No report.
Thank you. And Mr. Rock?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Huerta?
No, nothing for me either. Thank you.
You guys are helping me set a record here. I appreciate it. I do have a few comments. I think I'm gonna make up for, make up for you guys. First off, I know others have said it before me, but wanted to acknowledge Black History Month, February 1st through March 1st, honoring contributions and sacrifices from or that Black Americans have made to our nation and our history, celebrating the rich cultural heritage of the Black community and how that has impacted and benefited us all. This year's theme is Black Health and Wellness. It pays homage to the medical scholars and healthcare providers. And I know our schools have many programs and to celebrate Black History Month, very proud to be a part of of a district where we do a good job of celebrating. And I want to encourage everyone to search out at least one new thing online to celebrate during Black History Month. There's so many great resources out there. Also, Dr. Cascone mentioned that this is the start of National School Counselors Week. I loved your your comment about what was it, filling the well of the counselors? They do so much. On a personal note, I'm still in touch with my junior high school counselor. Just a testament to the the impact and difference that a school counselor can make in an individual's life. So really have a terrific appreciation. And thank you to our counselors at our schools. You do such amazing work with our students, and you're very much appreciated. Let's see, with regards to budget, on March 3rd, we will have a special budget meeting of the Board of Education. Budgets, taxes, staffing, paying for academic programs. I can't guarantee that you're going to be riveted as we move through this whole process. But we're all better when the community participates in local government and makes their voices heard. So I hope they'll join us for that special budget meeting on March 3rd. Finally, is it final? Yes. My final comment. School boards have been in the news a lot lately, mostly for issues around COVID-19, such as mask policies and remote learning. So it's really a breath of fresh air to see school boards in the news the past couple of weeks for something new, book banning. Everything old is new again, right? So I've started perusing lists online of books that have been banned by school districts around the country. I plan to read as many as I can, and where appropriate, I'd like to read those books with my daughter. The authors and the publishers who take risks to present humanity to us, even when it's uncomfortable, deserve our support. And so please check out a list of banned books online or at your local bookstore. Buy a few of those books and spend some time reading them with your children and discussing some challenging topics. We won't always know the answers, but we're not educating our kids if we try to prevent them from asking any questions. All right. I think that that brings us to Item 13. Our next school board meeting. Let's see, no more meetings for the next couple of weeks. Valentine's Day and President's Day. Don't those go together nicely? Who doesn't like a little, who doesn't feel a little romantic when we think about our presidents? Our presidents. Boy, I flubbed that joke, didn't I? Our next meeting will be Monday, February 28th, followed by the aforementioned budget meeting on Thursday, March 3rd. And yeah, so awkward. I think we're on to that's, yeah, well, we're right there at the end. Thank you so much for running this this program, all of our tech and broadcasting us out. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
That was very quick.
I'm trying to save you.
Forever grateful. Thank you so much. Okay. So thank you, Mr. Stevenson, for the motion and Ms. Huerta for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I as well. Opposed? I don't think we have any. So this meeting is now concluded, and the Board of Education will conduct no more business. Thank you all so much for attending. Good night.